I now call the November 1st, 2016 Regular Council Meeting to order. Would council members please denote their presence by depressing their yes switches?
All council members are present.
Council meetings are also televised and can be viewed on cable channel 192. Does anybody want to lead me or lead the pledge of allegiance instead of me? See kids. Anybody want to do it?
Yeah, we got a volunteer out there somewhere.
There you go.
Come on. There we go, good.
Alright.
Okay. Young man? You want to come up to the microphone? Kind of bend it down so we can hear you. And we're going to follow your cue.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the October 18th, 2016 Regular Council Meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on October 25th, 2016.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Humphrey, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Any corrections? Please cast your vote. And please record the votes.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the November 1st Bills and Claims as audited by City Manager McDonald.
So moved.
Seconded.
Was that Pacheco? Okay, moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Miller. Any abstentions? Please cast your vote. Scott. And please record the votes.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Okay. The third grade students from Park School have been learning about the election process and the importance of voting. As part of this project, they've created brochures to encourage people to vote. And they have been distributing these brochures in Park School area and at a few businesses in the same area. Mrs. Beamer would like some of our students to present some of their work to us. Mrs. Beamer, are we ready? Thank you. Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, you're going to have to speak up because that microphone won't reach much further down. Okay?
Hello, my name is Deacon and good evening. We are third grade students from Park School. Our teachers are Ms. Wheeler, Ms. Hill, Mysha Garcia, and Ms. Beamer. Our principal is Mr. Alstimer. We have spent this quarter learning about voting process. As we were learning about voting process, we learned that younger people, that only 55 percent, younger people are not voting. Only 55% 18 to 24-year-olds voted in the last reelection. We hoped to get more people out to vote.
Thank you. Who's next?
People in state, county, and city government are making decisions that affect our lives daily. We learned that you all make decisions about money, especially the ones at tax, being spent on projects in Casper that make it a better place to live.
It is important to vote because you want to create a good life for yourself and your children and grandchildren.
We created... Why did we create brochures in both Spanish and English? We created brochures in both English and Spanish because we wanted to make sure Spanish-speaking voters got the message also.
Every student at Park has the opportunity to learn Spanish. Students in the DLI program speak, read, and write in Spanish for half of our school day, and we thought this would be a good opportunity to practice writing in a meaningful way.
Nos gustaría darle algunos de nuestros folletos y gracias por dejarnos hablar con ustedes esta noche.
We would like you to give you some of our brochures and thank you for letting us speak with you tonight.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Well, thank you very much, kids. That was really cool. And just a little side note. In a letter dated 18... no, 1787, Thomas Jefferson was writing to his nephew, Peter Carr. And in that letter, he recommended that Peter Carr learn Spanish because it was the language of the Americas and to learn French because it's a language of diplomacy. Council will now address the main business portion of the meeting. Council carries out businesses by three types of action: by ordinance, resolution, and minute action. Ordinances require three readings and votes, whereas the other items are passed by one. Ordinances create or modify law, whereas resolutions and minute action items provide for council to carry out its business. These various actions have different publication and public hearing requirements. Items may be considered by consent or not consent. Consent items are typically routine and will not be discussed by council. Items not listed as content, consent, will be discussed by council. And there is a process for the public, as well as council, to remove a title from consent. Council will now consider establishing the hearing schedule of future public hearings, which are held for the purpose of obtaining public input. Public hearings are held for items such as annexations, liquor license transactions, passing of the budget, and zone changes. Public hearings are also... They also require a public notice via publication in the local newspaper. Please read the consent agenda item titles.
Establish November 15th, 2016 as the public hearing date for consideration of the following three items: Zone change of Lot 1 of lots 1 through 10 of Eastward Heights 3, located at 2300 East 15th Street from R4 High Density Residential to C2 General Business. Zone change of North Casper Edition Block 22, Lots 199 through 200 and tract adjacent to Lot 200, located at 702 North Jefferson Street from R3 1- to 4-unit residential to C2 General Business. Nuisance basement lien at 1169 North Jackson Street. Establish December 6, 2016 as the public hearing date for consideration of a transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number 29 from Mountain West State Sales, Inc., doing business as Gallus Liquor Mart, located at 748 East Yellowstone Street to Double C Hospitality LLC, doing business as Gallus Liquor Mart, located at 748 East Yellowstone Street.
The Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, establish the public hearing dates just read.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Vice Mayor Kathy, seconded by Councilman Miller. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the votes.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now hold previously scheduled public hearings for the purpose of obtaining public input. Public hearings are held for items such as annexations, liquor license transactions, and passage of the budget and zone changes. The city attorney will present applicable exhibits for the issue, and the city manager will give council a report. Members of the audience will then be asked to speak, either in favor or against the issue, and then the council will discuss the issue and act upon it if necessary. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the zone change of the South Poplar Street corridor between West Collins and CY Avenue. City Attorney Lubin, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. Two exhibits for this item. Exhibit number one being correspondence from Liz Becker to V.H. McDonald dated October 26, 2016. And exhibit number two, that being the affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated October 18, 2016.
City Manager McDonald, your report, please.
Your Honor, the City Council created the Old Yellowstone District and South Poplar Corridor, OYDSPC Form-Based Code as a new zoning classification in June of 2008. Also in 2008, the City Council rezoned approximately 130 acres to the OYDSPC Form-Based Code, including approximately 30 acres consisting of an area generally east and west of South Poplar Street, south from West Collins Drive to CY Avenue. In accordance with Section 17.12.160 of the Casper Municipal Code, the City Council can initiate zone changes. Accordingly, the City Council approved a council-initiated zone change along Cedar Street, moving, changing the zoning from the OYDSP Form-Based Code to C2 along that area. During the zone change process, a business owner on South Poplar Street spoke to City Council requesting that the council consider changing the zoning along South Poplar to C2, which would be a like process. Should council decide to approve a zone change on South Poplar Corridor between West Collins and CY, staff would recommend that the zoning be changed to C2 General Business. The C2 zoning district allows a very broad range of commercial, office, and residential uses. The City Council discussed the potential zone change at its public work session on September 13, 2016. In addition to the legally mandated public notification process, staff has also sent a letter to all affected property owners explaining the proposed zone change and offering to answer any questions.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issues involving the zone change of the South Poplar Street corridor to please approach the lectern. Anyone who wants to speak in favor? Welcome, Mr. Reed.
I've been here too much. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. My name is Michael Reed. I reside at 1615 Lucre Drive, 82609. I'm one of the members of Lisco LLC that owns the property at 1016 South Poplar, and we have our liquor store, Poplar Wine and Spirits, on that property. I did speak to you about a zone change when you decided to change the property to the east of us. At that time, you requested that I probably should talk with the OYD Committee, which I did, and I know that they have given you a recommendation to change the zone. I still believe, and always will, that it's a good idea to change it to a C2. I think it opens it up and gives people a little broader perspective of how to build a new facility or reuse some of that property. It's in pretty rundown shape. It's a gateway to our community. Part of the property that you rezoned to the east of us has been changed to C2 on CY and West Collins. You recently changed the zoning on a piece of property to the south of CY on Poplar to C2. So it just makes sense to me that you do this. I think it'll help the area, I really do. I asked Craig when I came in tonight if changing it to C2 would maybe do away with the massage parlor that we've wound up with up the street, and he says it's a permitted use. So maybe we can get rid of it some other way. If we keep stopping in with the police. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions or comments for Michael Reed?
Thank you, sir.
Oh, Councilman Healy.
Mr. Reed, I was just wondering if you've spoken with any of the neighbors on Poplar Street and if you have any feedback from them on their perspective of this.
You know, I've spoken to a gentleman who owns a couple pieces of property across the street from us. He's hopeful that you do change it tonight. I was not able to find a lot of people that own the property, that live on Poplar Street, or actually even some of the buildings that are occupied. So not as many as I would have liked to, but we did make some contact. Yes, sir?
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in favor of the zone change for the South Poplar Street corridor? Welcome, sir.
Good evening, my name's David DeWald. I reside at 122 South Elk Street, 82601. I am a property owner on Poplar, and as much as I am in favor of changing it away from OYD, I would think a better use and a best and highest use would be C4. I would like to say that I'm surprised that since I would be not aligned saying that none of you own any property in this zone area, that no one talked to anybody about why you're doing this. And I think that's kind of odd that... I mean, I like Mike Reed a lot, but if one guy can change a whole street, that's pretty cool. But if you're going to change my property, I should at least have some say in that. And so I would like it to change to C4 for highest and best use, which is common. That still allows C2 to do everything they want to do. But that's my perspective on it. And just so you know, starting tomorrow, I'm making my property look a little bit better because it's kind of ugly where it is. The retaining wall's cracked and beat up, and the house is in bad shape. But it's one of my rentals, and if anybody knows me, they know that I'm taking care of my stuff. So we'll be doing some digging tomorrow. Anybody has any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Could you describe the reasoning behind the advantages of C4 versus C2, sir?
Well, the advantages is just highest and best use. You have more choices in there than you do in C2.
Such as?
Well, one of the choices that I would like to see, and I know this is going to make some people angry, but I could explain why I would like it, and I would put a billboard on my property. Everybody's always talking about we need to get more economic money spent in this town, but everybody always makes the outdoor sign people the bastard child, when in fact, when there's a missing child, that's the first person... Lamar is one of the first people that puts that alerts out there, and they do that for free. And when people are coming through this town and they're looking for a place to stay, and I'm sure we've all done that, I know I have, when I'm looking for a place to stay, motels are the ones, the billboards, I'm looking for. See what's available. Political signs. Not all of you spend your money on outdoor signs, but that's another higher and better use. And so that's my concern, that that would be one more thing that I could use that property for. And I understand the spacing. The other thing is, you know, that's Highway 220. You know, whether you realize that or not, that belongs to the State of Wyoming. And so I feel that being a C4 highway business is a better term than just a standard C2 business. So those are my concerns. Anybody else?
More questions for David DeWald. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Anyone else care to speak in favor of the zone change? Welcome, Mr. Rowland.
Keith Rowland, 542 South Durbin. As I've spoken before, against the entire Form-Based Code for this entire district, I think this is a good place to start. And if anybody has any concerns, maybe we can do it in piecemeal, you know, have this one and then expand the district. As I've spoken before, I think the Form-Based Code works well when you're preserving existing type of structure, like the South Beach, the Art Deco District, or Georgetown and Washington, DC. You're preserving an existing structure that you're trying to preserve with a Form-Based Code. When you're trying to create a new type of structure from parking lots and whatever, Form-Based Code is counterproductive because it makes it more likely that nothing's going to be done. I think we need to look at the fact that if in the future we zone this area, rezone it, we don't use Form-Based Code at all. It did not work. Part of the problem with the Poplar Street area, it was based upon the fact that there was going to be more pedestrian traffic. Well, anybody that lives in Casper for a while, they realize after a while that anything that's more than four blocks, people drive. They don't walk here. This whole thing, we have this fairy tale. They had pictures of people walking all over the place. This isn't happening in Casper. People don't walk. And there was no... There was everything was like, what's up? To be built up to the sidewalk and hit all those restrictions and where you could put your parking lot and everything else. People drive. It was not realistic. I was hoping, when I saw the resolution that was passed for this hearing, that we could expand the area, but then I realized that when I saw the public notice, it's for specific properties only, and it would not be legal or fair to the other property owners within this district. But I think since the council initiated it on their own here, that maybe we should initiate and contact all the property area owners and the people who actually rent there too, if they rent, not just the owners, but the businesses who might be impacted. They don't want to be impacted by having their owner saying, oh, by the way, we've changed it, you rent here, so you have no input. But everybody that's either rental owner or whatever in that area, to see if maybe we want to change the whole thing. It's been 10 years since we started the process. As I mentioned, a month ago, it's been... It's a complete failure. I mean, we boomed in the rest of the city. Nothing was built over here. Only winter things were built over here. We have a few renovations. But it's a complete failure. I mean, you cannot restrict it. So you can only have three colors in the front of your building. Mr. Goodenough has mentioned before... I forgot, but he keeps mentioning the Rainbow Cafe. I mean, that can't have Rainbow Cafe with a sign out front. You can't build with teak wood. You have certain types of wood you can build with. You can't build with a certain type of concrete, and you can't use tilt wall construction. Anybody that knows anything about retail stores, they do tilt wall. They weren't allowing tilt wall construction over here. So I really think we need to immediately pass this one tonight, whether it's C4, C2, something. And then make this the first step to get the entire district rezoned to either C2 or C4. Something's got to change because this will not be built the way it is right now. They'll even have a hard time getting mortgages for getting this built because the mortgages, when you do this, they're going to be reluctant. That means that mortgage officer is going to have to pay attention to this. That means someone's incurring professional fee expenses. Is it the bank or outside consultants? This adds to your cost. There's many thresholds. You have to go before an architectural committee. That means professional person is going to be there, like a lawyer or somebody else. You have to retain an architect. There's all these extra fees that you guys have placed on these owners or potential owners or potential people that want to build something and just lease it. And it's been a disaster. The banks, someone's going to incur the fees over here, and you basically have tried to preserve something that does not exist. You're trying to create something. Form-Based Code, it was a wrong approach here. I was adamantly against it 10 years ago, nine years ago, and eight years ago. And everybody sort of looked at me while I was just being, you know, being negative. That's sort of my attitude anyhow. But they said, you're just being a typical negative person. I think we need to change.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor of the zone change of the South Poplar Street corridor? Please approach the lectern. Anyone else to speak in favor? At this time, I would like to ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the issues involving the zone change of the South Poplar Street corridors, please approach the lectern. Anyone to speak in opposition? Welcome, sir.
My name's David Van Patten. I live at 1026 West 13th Street. I'm a private property owner there. My parents owned that. They moved into town '58, and I inherited it. I currently reside there. I'm getting ready to retire. Actually, I have retired. And my plans for retirement don't include that to be rezoned into a business-type zoning. I have two property owners that join me. I have a business, The Pizza Hut, across the street. And I have two rentals that also, one across the alley and one next door. I have enough problems with the businesses that are there, trying to deal with the things that they oppose upon me as a private property owner. I don't see any advantage for me with this proposal to change this zone. Actually, you're going to make my life probably hell. I don't like this. And I don't think I'm... I haven't heard from anybody speak about the private property owners that actually live on site, that don't have rentals, that don't have rentals as a form of business for them, for private individuals. The rentals that neighbor me, they're owners, live out of state. So they have management companies, I believe. Actually, one doesn't. His son lives locally. But the other one has a management company. They don't respond to anything I say or my concerns at all. I have contacted representatives of the City Council and voiced my problems and asked for something to be done, and nothing has been. So I understand the need for business. I understand the need, why it's necessary, but it shouldn't be at the expense of private property owners. Thank you. Oh, any questions?
Questions for David Van Patten? Okay, first, Councilman Hawkins.
Just so we're clear, C2 actually does permit residential. It's probably the broadest category we have in the standard Euclidean zoning program that we have in most of Casper. So it does permit residential. I have to live in a C2 zone in a residence. So it's there.
Mr. Hawkins, I understand that because I crossed the alley. Currently, there is a business zoning of one-half block on each side of Poplar Street. Currently. But now, this proposal takes the other half of the block of in-between Box Elder and Poplar But now, this proposal takes the other half of the block of, in between Box Elder and Poplar. And my house sits adjoining the alley on the west side. So, so now, I've had to deal with the impact of, of the business zoning on the other half of the block across the alley. I've, I've had to deal with that. I mean, from what they imposed upon me as a private, as a private citizen living in a private home. And I don't, I don't want to have any more of that, honestly. I, I would prefer to have as many residential people that live in their homes as neighbors, actually physically live in their homes as neighbors, as much as possible. And this might take that away from me. And I'm, I don't want to have to look forward in my retirement years. And as I get older, I'll be dealing with health issues. I don't want to have to deal with this kind of stuff. I deal with it enough as it is. The frustrations and what have you.
I just, I just wasn't sure you were aware that housing is permitted in C2.
I am, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Van Patten, thank you for your comments. I guess, in a similar vein, but, you know, the current zoning, the form-based code allows for business. And, you know, if we switched it to C2, it still allows for business. I, I wondered, do you have a specific proposal or zoning type that, that you'd recommend for consideration here? Rather than, you know, because what we have today and what we're proposing to change to, don't, neither of them really fix the issue that you're concerned with.
I understand that. I just, I don't understand the zoning. So, so I don't, I'm not informed on that. I'm just speaking on behalf of, that's my home. And I, I, I deal with enough there. I have Poplar and 13th Street. That's a heavy, a busy intersection. The noise factor is a major issue with me. There, I have many other issues other than this zoning. And, and so, if it is zoned currently to where businesses can come in, for whatever reason they have it, all I'm saying is, I'm just trying to look after my property, my home, and I want it to be the best that it can be under the circumstances. I think there's a lot of other areas where businesses can go to develop a business community. I don't think this is, this is, for as long as I can remember, this has all been primarily residential. And, and so, I know times change, things change, Casper's changed. But I'm in a situation to where I'm not a young man anymore. And I, I've, I've been told by different people, maybe you should just move. Well, I guess I could, but sort of like that home has a lot of sentimental value to me. I sort of like Casper. I sort of want to stay in Casper. But I haven't chosen to leave yet. So that's, that's my input. Anybody else have any questions?
More questions for David Van Patten?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in opposition to the proposed zone change of the South Poplar Street corridor? Please approach the lectern. Anyone else to speak in opposition? There being no one else to speak either for or against the issues involving the zone change of the South Poplar Street corridor, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance approving a council-initiated zone change of multiple properties located in the West Old Yellowstone District and South Poplar Street corridor.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve on first reading the ordinance just read.
Still moved.
Second. Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Discussion. Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to give people some history on, on what transpired here, going back almost 15 years ago now, when the Old Yellowstone District was first dreamt about and first kind of put together with the form-based code, the idea was that, as a matter of fact, the State Highway Department had come in and they had drawn pictures of what Poplar Street might look like in the future. And it was going to be kind of a nice pathway down the middle of the street and much wider. And in fact, the anticipation was that the Highway Department was going to go ahead and buy some of the properties along the street, similar to what they did on Beverly Street on the east side of town, and make it a much wider street without, but they were going to put a parkway down the middle of it. Well, the way the Highway Department works, that was not going to be able to be done. So in fact, it wasn't done. And as a result of that, I think a number of people, even in the Old Yellowstone District, realized that their dream couldn't come true to have this nice parkway with trees and so forth down that street. And in fact, it would have widened the street. It would have taken some properties the state would have had to buy. The state didn't have the money to do it. And everybody realizes, as was mentioned here just a minute ago, that is Highway 220. And I believe that by changing it back to C2, and, and the Old Yellowstone group is in favor of this, by changing it back to C2, that really is our widest-ranging zoning district. You can have a lot of different types of businesses there. You can also have housing as a permitted use in that zone. So it wouldn't mean that those houses would go away unless somebody decided to sell it for a business, but it would give them that option. And with the traffic that, that road has on it and the constriction we're going to have in terms of the number of curb cuts, curb cuts that would be allowed on there by the State Highway Department, which is not a city issue, that's a State Highway Department issue, I will support the zoning to C2.
Thank you. Anyone else? Vice Mayor Kathy.
Along with Councilman Hopkins' comments about YDOT, I believe up until eight years ago, this was a C2 zone. And at that time, when it was made part of the OYD and South Poplar Corridor, really, the main things that changed were not so much the zoning per se, but the type of design, the architecture of it. So in essence, all we're doing is reverting back to the zoning it was up until eight years ago. So that's not a major change from that standpoint. It's more the architectural look of, of what could be built as it is, what can actually be built. So businesses could still have been built there. Houses could still be built there. It's now the, the architecture of the, the particular design is really the main thing that's changing. So I just wanted to clarify that, that we're reverting back to where we were eight years ago as far as zoning is concerned with that particular stretch of property.
Anyone else? The Councilman, okay, first, Councilman Healy.
Thank you. I was just wondering, Mr. Mayor, if we could have someone from staff present the differences between C2 and C4 for our benefit before this decision is made?
I think that's a fairly good idea. Craig Collins.
Hi, Your Honor. Craig Collins, City Planning Office, 200 North David. The C4 is almost an industrial district. The main difference you heard was billboards, outside storage, pipe yards. Warehousing is all permitted in C4 where it would not be in C2. You could get a conditional use for a billboard in the C2. It just requires an extra step. And we would look at whether it fits in the neighborhood or not, whereas it would be a permitted use by right in the C4. So the C2 is much broader with regard to land uses. It allows residential. C4 does not.
That was going to be my question. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Collins. Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just in keeping with some of the other comments, it seems that the only, and I, we obviously have concerns for someone like Mr. Van Patten, who has lived in a property for many years and minded his own business and, and watched this neighborhood change. And I suspect that he's also seen a change from an area where they were homeowner-occupied to primarily rental units over time. It seems to me the only protection that we could provide to him that would ensure that he would have the security of not, no businesses being built around his property would be if we zoned to R1, which would then put Mr. Reed and The Pizza Hut out of compliance. And, and it, it's a sad story, I think, for, because we've seen, seen this happen probably with every arterial in Casper, that at one time it was residential and then gradually transitioned over with real people being negatively affected. And yet, I think our responsibility here is to take care of the greater good, which is to recognize that Poplar is a major corridor and that it, it, as Councilman, Councilman Kathy notes, it has been slated for business development for many years. So I will also vote in favor of this with the understanding that Mr. Van Patten, and I'm sure several others, will be negatively affected.
Anyone else? Do we have any amendments? Council, please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
On the agenda is a public hearing for the transfer of ownership of Microbrewery Liquor License Number 1. However, it has been determined that a public hearing is not applicable. The chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, cancel the public hearing concerning the transfer of ownership of Microbrewery Liquor License Number 1.
Still moved.
Second.
I heard Councilman Hopkins move and seconded by Vice Mayor Kathy. Please cast your votes. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the issuance of Restaurant Liquor License Number 31 to Himalayan Indian Cuisine. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, pardon me. I do, Your Honor. I have four exhibits for this item. Exhibit number one being correspondence from Tracy Belser, excuse me again, to VH McDonald dated November 1st, 2016. Exhibit number two, that being an affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated October 24th, 2016. Exhibit number three, the affidavit of website publication as published on the City of Casper website dated October 18th, 2016. And exhibit number four, that being the actual liquor license application as filed with the city on September 16th, 2016.
City Manager McDonald, your report, please.
Your Honor, an application has been received for a new restaurant license, restaurant liquor license from Himalayan Indian Cuisine LLC, doing business as Himalayan Indian Cuisine, located at 232 East 2nd Street. This is a, a new business going in that location. It is a restaurant license. It's subject to the requirement that 60% of the sales annually is from food service. And alcohol is not sold to be taken off the premise, except for a provision where wine can be taken off, a bottle of wine can be taken out. The required publications and web notices have been made, and the items are for you to consider.
At this time, I would ask, excuse me, ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issuance of Restaurant Liquor License Number 31, to please approach the lectern. Those to speak in favor. Are we sure? Okay, at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the issuance of Restaurant Liquor License Number 31, to please approach the lectern. There being no one to speak either for or against the issuance of Restaurant Liquor License Number 31, I now declare the public hearing closed. The chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, authorize the issuance of Restaurant Liquor License Number 31 to Himalayan Indian Cuisine LLC.
Still moved.
Moved by Councilman Miller, seconded by Councilman Humphrey. Discussion. Amendments. Please cast your votes. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the issuance of Restaurant Liquor License Number 9 to Shogun Restaurant Management. City Attorney Lubin, your exhibits, please.
Yes, Your Honor, I have four exhibits for this item also. Exhibit number one being correspondence from Tracy Belser to VH McDonald. That document dated November 1st, 2016. Exhibit number two, being the affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated October 24th, 2016. Exhibit number three, that document being the affidavit of website publication as published on the City of Casper website dated October 18th, 2016. And exhibit number four, that being the actual liquor license application in this matter, as filed with the city on September 19th, 2016.
Thank you. City Manager McDonald, your report.
Your Honor, this is an application for a new restaurant license for Shogun Restaurant Management Incorporated, doing business as Shogun Restaurant. And it's located at 3095 Talon Drive. Again, this is a restaurant license, subject to the 60% of gross sales must be food and liquor, alcohol is not sold off the premise, except for full balls of wine can be taken off the premise. And again, the necessary publications and web notice have been made, and this item is also before you tonight.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issuance of Restaurant Liquor License Number 9, to please approach the lectern. Those to speak in favor. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Zhou Zhou Ling. Street address at 3320 Whispering Springs, Row, Casper, Wyoming. I am the owner of the Shogun Restaurant Management, INC., DBA Shogun Restaurant. And I'm so excited here tonight to discuss to the submitted application of Restaurant Liquor License Number 9 for Shogun Restaurant, located at 3095 Talon Drive, Spring Number 400. I believe the application is in order, but I want to tailor a, I'm sorry, opportunity tonight to thank Council for the consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor of the issuance of Liquor License Number 9? Please approach the lectern. Welcome, Mr. Sweeney.
Good evening, Pat Sweeney, 951 North Kimball. Just wanted to say that I've been, since the new group took over, and I think the food's better and the service is better. And I, I think they'll continue to do a great job. So would appreciate your consideration. And, you know, it's tough for some of these folks that are trying to open new businesses with somewhat of a little bit of a language barrier and, and understanding our way of doing business. And I, my guess is, the young man, I haven't been to the Himalayan restaurant yet, but I saw him on Mondays with Mark on K2 TV a week or two ago. And my guess is, he's cooking the line right now. So from, from the looks of what he's trying to accomplish, I think he's only 21 or 22. And I think would, I'm, I'm sure he would like to have been here, but, and, but anyway, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Pat Sweeney, just one question if I may.
Councilman?
Since you pay attention to what's going on in Casper in the restaurant market, and, and I just have a question. These folks took a tremendous
I don't know how to frame this, but is it your sense, because people on the west end of town, of course, are always asking, when are we going to have more options on the west end? And of course, Jay's has been a great addition to the west end, as has the Shogun Restaurant. But do you have a sense that things are moving in that direction, based on your conversations with people that have taken that risk? And do you see us perhaps having more demand on the west end of town?
Well, Mr. Johnson would be better suited to speak to that. He's here tonight. I would hope that there'll be continued growth over there with all the housing starts and the Harmony Hills addition and the different things happening. I would like to point out that this is two new liquor licenses that WHAM and some council have been squawking that there's not enough opportunity because of the population formula. But I would point out that these are, right on your own words, issuance of new Restaurant Liquor License, which provides the opportunity for these folks to serve alcohol to the public. And if I'm correct, I think Council has unlimited opportunity with restaurant licenses, and that's what we in the industry have been saying for a long time. There is opportunity. And yes, there's some restrictions, but they're not that bad of restrictions, especially they have to follow the same guidelines on sixty-fourty split between food and alcohol, just like the restriction on a bar grill. But anyway, but I do think we'll see more, more opportunities. I'd love to see Johnny Jay's, I don't live on the west side, I live in North Casper, but where we have basically the Aripia Bar and the New Venezuela Cuisine down in North Casper. But I think we'll see continued growth, especially with the housing starts over there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't hold my comments against these folks.
Anyone else care to speak in favor of the issuance of Liquor License Number Nine? Please approach the lectern. Anyone else to speak in favor? Okay. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the issuance of Liquor License Number Nine to please approach the lectern. Restaurant Liquor License Number Nine. There being no one else to speak either for or against the issuance of Restaurant Liquor License Number Nine, I now declare the public hearing closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, authorize the issuance of Restaurant Liquor License Number Nine to Shogun Restaurant Management Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Powell. Please cast your votes. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye.
Consideration of next item will be by ordinance. Please read the consent ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a zone change for lots five and six of the Standard Oil Company subdivision in the City of Casper, Wyoming.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on third reading the consent ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Hiley. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye. Motion passes.
Consideration of next item will be by ordinance. Please read the consent ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a zone change for lots one through three, Block Three, Lot One, Block Four, and Lot One, Block Two, all located in the Harmony Hills Edition Number Two, Phase Two, in the City of Casper, Wyoming.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading the consent ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Powell. Please cast your votes. And please record the votes.
With all members voting aye. Motion passes.
Counsel will now consider consent resolutions. Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item ten A-one, a resolution authorizing a professional services, professional services agreement for impound wrecker and towing services. Item ten A-two, a resolution authorizing an independent contractor agreement with Nautrona County School District Number One. Item ten A-three, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Bypass Mobile LLC for provision of equipment and professional services for the purchase and implementation of a point of sale system. Item ten A-four, a resolution approving Nautrona County Platt Salt Creek Heights Business Center, Phase Four. Item ten A-five, a resolution authorizing the release of a mortgage deed. Item ten A-six, a resolution authorizing a contract amendment with Brezner Communications LLC to move a fiber connection to one eighty-five Valley Drive. Item ten A-seven, a resolution authorizing change order number one with Wyoming Machinery Company for the Casper Event Center Emergency Generator Project. Item ten A-eight, a resolution authorizing a license agreement with Advanced Communication Technologies LLC to install buried fiber optic cable infrastructure within city-owned right-of-way. Item ten A-nine, a resolution authorizing change order number one to the agreement with Headquist Construction, Inc., for a time extension of one hundred and ninety-four days for the East Twenty-first Street Improvements Project.
The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Miller. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the votes.
With all members voting aye. Motion passes.
Counsel will now consider minute action items. These are business items that do not require a resolution. Please read the consent minute action titles.
Item eleven A-one, transfer of corporate ownership of Micro Brewery License Number One for Wyoming State Brewing Company LLC, doing business as Wyoming State Brewing Company, located at two five six South Center Street. Item eleven A-two, acknowledging change of corporate ownership for bar and grill license number four, Casper Dave's LLC, located at fifty-nine-hundred East Second Street. Item eleven A-three, approving the request for a change in dispensing room for bar and grill license number four, Casper Dave's LLC, doing business as Wyoming Ale Works, located at fifty-nine-hundred East Second Street. Item eleven A-four, authorizing the reappointment of Greg Tucker and Jennifer Walker to the Leisure Services Advisory Board.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda items just read.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Humphrey, seconded by Councilman Miller. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye. Motion passes.
Now is the time we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the counsel to come forward. As stated on the first page of the agenda, we do ask the following. We ask you to please state your name and address. We ask that you recognize that counsel will not respond to personnel matters. These will be referred to through the city manager. We ask that the questions posed by speakers recognize that counsel is under no obligation to respond to those questions. And your presentations will be limited to five minutes. There's a clock and when the light goes red, your time is out. Please, please don't make me gobble. Anyone wishing to address counsel, please come forward.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Keith Goodenough, three-three-three South Seconee. My remarks tonight are a response to Mr. Mayor's comments at the last meeting when he re-imposed the five-minute limit and said something to the effect that we're under no legal obligation to let the citizens speak at all. I personally found that to be insulting and inappropriate, considering that you all are representatives of the citizens, and how are you going to know what we think unless you allow us to speak? So, the five-minute limit, I see as reasonable, but there's going to be situations that require some flexibility. There's been some women here with compelling stories of their involvement with the criminal justice system, and the fact that they can't cut and paste their comments down to five minutes, I don't think is any reason to cut them short in their ability to communicate with their elected representatives their very real situations. And I know that this council has, in the past, ignored the citizens in a number of ways. I was here for a number of them. We had one situation where the owner of a Casper cab company came in and pointed out that cab companies not based in Casper, that operate in Casper are not following the ordinances. I haven't been to every meeting since I retired, but I don't believe anything's been done about that situation. We had a no-bid contract go to Wyoming Machinery when I was on the council, or shortly thereafter. No-bid contracts are because there's no, supposedly no suitable competition. Only one company can provide that service or that equipment. The person from, I think it was John Deere, stood right here at this microphone and said, "We wanted to bid on that." But it was a sole-source bid, so they didn't have the chance to bid on it. I don't think that was ever looked into. The municipal court, one of the employees quit and sent a five-page email to the council and to other people, pointing out the many flaws in the municipal court system. Some people had gone to jail after they paid their fines because the information wasn't processed, and I suspect that that was not looked into very much at all either. Also, I came down here a few months ago and said, "Why not allow the public to use the chambers for political debates, forums, so on and so forth?" It was promoted that that was not allowable use. Three days later, I saw on my Facebook page, the City of Cheyenne was using their council chambers for a council forum. So why Cheyenne can do it, not Casper? I'm not exactly sure. And I know the mayor mentioned that the vast outpouring of public comments threatened to extend the length of the meetings longer than the actual business meetings. Well, I'd like to point out, you have very short business meetings, so that might have something to do with it. You could easily have a little bit longer business meeting and inform the public better if you would take some things off the consent that need to be discussed and explained to the citizens. A good example is the five-point-one million dollars that's, was designated to help the Parkway Plaza with their convention center plans. That was on the consent list. I don't know, it seems to me, if you're going to commit five-point-one million, maybe a little bit of discussion and explanation is in order. So, and I thought it was ironic that Vice Mayor Kathy made some remarks about the lack of citizen participation at the public hearings on the future growth of Casper at the same meeting. Well, perhaps citizens have come to the conclusion that their comments aren't really wanted or appreciated, and maybe that's why not so many people come to the planning meetings. So that's well within my five-minute limit, I think. I'd also like to point out that when it comes to the Old Yellowstone District issues, I probably voted no on that because I was for property rights, and that was a very liberal taking away of private property rights, and now we're going back the other way. And I guess those are the extent of my remarks, but I would just remind everybody that you represent the public. We are the public. I guess you could legally prevent us from speaking at all. I don't think that would be very wise myself, but I guess you got the power. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to address counsel? Please approach the lectern.
Good evening. Taran McNaughton, two-nine-oh-six Belmont. I just wanted to follow up with a few of Keith's comments. I also found it a little disheartening, the comment that was made, that we may not be able to address our comments. The reason that we have chosen this forum to address the city is because we don't feel like we're being listened to in any other forum that we're going to, and you guys kind of stand as the top of the food chain, so to speak here. I think I speak for myself and the other ladies in this group in that statement. And then I just wanted to bring something to the council. I don't know if you're aware, maybe you are, maybe you aren't. Last time I spoke, I did speak of the lack of care and concern I felt from the Casper Police Department during my marriage and my domestic battery issues. And I wanted to point out that I know that, you know, I'm kind of maybe overstepping here, looking at Wyoming State statutes, but I know through WHAM you guys can play a part in that and have a voice. Currently, domestic battery under Wyoming State Statute six-dash-two-dash-five-eleven, domestic battery is punishable by imprisonment for not more than six months and a fine of seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's for the second offense. Under that definition, D aggravated assault and battery is included. When you look at the aggravated assault and battery penalty under six-dash-two-dash-five-oh-two, aggravated battery is a felony, not a misdemeanor, and it's punishable by imprisonment for not more than ten years. I find there to be a gross kind of miscommunication here. If we are going to call domestic battery assault and battery and only charge it as misdemeanor, yet we are charging assault and battery as a felony offense, I mean, you're pretty much telling me that it's okay for me to go ahead and beat on a family member, yet if I were to approach a member of the community and perform the same act, I would be a felon rather than being charged with something, you know, that I might spend a few days in jail over. You know, and so I would like the council to maybe look at that and then approach it at a broader level. I noticed Chief Wetzel was in the back, and I was also just wondering, you know, and you don't have to answer, how much progress has been made in kind of looking into additional funds for looking into more detectives? My other question is, I have heard that we have anywhere from three detectives to eleven detectives on the Casper PD without ever gaining a real solid answer on that, and so I'm not sure if that's something the council can answer or if it would be more appropriate for, you know, the chief, maybe here or afterwards. But I am, you know, just curious if we have a solid number on how many detectives the department currently does have.
Eight.
Eight. Thank you.
But, but one of those detectives is assigned to cyber crimes.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Your Honor?
Yes?
I just want to clarify the assault and battery, you said aggravated assault and battery. That's a felony because aggravated means he used a deadly weapon and caused serious bodily injury.
Absolutely. However, on the domestic battery statute, D aggravated assault and battery under WS-six-dash-two-dash-five-oh-two is included under the domestic battery statute as the same crime and punishable by that offense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, and I just had one other follow-up, one other follow-up comment. Last week in our work session, which is recorded and available for you to listen to, the Chief of Police did present to council information on staffing and other information relevant to the, to the subjects which you're speaking to, so I would encourage you to listen to last week's work session recordings, which are available on the city website.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Shay Snapp, two-three-three Daffodil Street. I am coming, actually, I've been watching from the sessions at home. I haven't, I used to kind of be a lot more involved in the council. I stepped back, and I realized there's a lot of things that are coming to you guys that, I mean, you hear them, you want to make a change. Obviously, you don't want to see people suffering. So my suggestion is, would you guys be willing to have a community subcommittee on special victims and domestic violence? Because I looked in the research Minneapolis's domestic violence and their victims units, they have community members who are action team members. I mean, they're volunteers, but that addresses the funds as well as maybe coming up with some ideas to solve these things. Because we can continue to talk about- ideas to solve these things, because we can continue to talk about them and be upset and not make any changes, and nothing's going to ever change. So, my suggestion is, and I would be willing to be on that committee, and I'm sure there's others like myself who've been in situations where we've gone through domestic violence or victim situations, who would also like to step up. Cheyenne has better options than we do for both of these situations. There's countless stories throughout the United States that have better systems in place, and it's the community that runs it and the community that pushes it. So, my suggestion and my thought would be that we should have a subcommittee for victims' rights and domestic violence and work with the police department.
Councilman Pacheco.
I know part of it is I've been kind of following it myself and studying a little bit and looking into this is, I know Self-Help Center has also offered to reach out to help out as well and work with us, and so I think that's an area that I think the city can look at doing and being able to say, you know, how can we partner? Because one of the things that I know in my background to make sure that what we need to do is we need to form coalitions, it's one thing to come up, you know, and being able to say, "Okay, and you're exactly right Shay, by saying, we can complain, we can scream, we can holler, but if nothing gets done and we sit here stone-faced and say, 'Okay, thanks for coming,' and pat you on the head and say goodbye." But I think part of that is how to form coalitions within the community, that this body can only do so much, but it really is you guys. And, you know, and that, and having, and I know what you're going to say, but having that, this body also forming those, helping to form those coalitions with the community members as well, because really the power lies more with you guys than any, you know, than what we can do ultimately. That's what I believe anyway, I could be wrong. But my point is, is that really reaching out and forming those community coalitions with people is really vital, and I agree with you on that.
And we do have examples to go based off. I mean, Minneapolis has a great program, and just theirs, Art Washington, I got into quite a conversation about, and he's kind of the one that led me that direction and said, "Well, look at these other programs and see how they addressed it within their communities." But I know we're all scattered people, we all don't know each other. Coming together and talking to you guys is, you are the glue that's going to start it out. We can, we don't know each other, and tomorrow I don't know the next person that's going to come complain and, or, and not complain, because I don't, the situations are real. The frustration of how they're being dealt with is the complaint. And so, I'm not downplaying the situations and what happened. That's the part that's scary that we need to obviously help with, the complaining, because nobody, they don't know what to do. I mean, you can only stomp your feet so many times and nobody's listening, so you guys get to hear it until, well, you guys become the glue to help this happen.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council? Please come forward. Welcome, Mr. Zimmerman.
Evening. Dale Zimmerman, 3035 Bel Air Drive. This is the first of November, and of course, everybody knows that this month has Thanksgiving Day in it, but I am extremely thankful today, and I'd like to share with you something that, why I'm so thankful today. I have a photo, if you could show it, of me from three years ago, and you might understand why I'm so thankful. Can it be put up on the screen?
We'll pass it amongst.
Okay. Three years ago, I had to have brain surgery. I had a terrible headache for a couple of days and missed work, and my wife finally took me into the shop to finish up a truck for my boss, and on the way home, she wouldn't take me home, she took me to the ER. And I want to thank Wyoming Medical Center for what they did. They rushed me into ER, took a picture, and when the doctor comes running out of the room looking at the picture and says, "Take him to ICU," you know it's something serious. And the next day, they did brain surgery and had to remove a golf ball-sized blood clot from my brain. So, I am thankful. I want to thank God, number one, and my wife Katie for staying with me the whole time. I also want to thank, it was a visiting surgeon, Dr. Kenneth Tonyman from Arkansas, who was filling in as a visiting surgeon, who prayed with me before the surgery, and a couple of weeks after the surgery, I got to see him again, and he prayed with me and told me that he don't know how he got that blood clot out of there without any damage being done, and he said it was God's hand on his that got that blood clot out of there, and I want to thank him. The doctors and nurses were great at the hospital. Alcorn Rehab, I had to be in there for a while. Many family, friends, and church members came and visited me. In fact, on Thanksgiving Day, Ed Smith, a great man, came to the hospital with a Thanksgiving dinner so I could eat real food in the hospital, not that the hospital doesn't have good food, but it's just something about home-cooked food is better. But thinking about how blessed I've been, and I've been examining a lot of things in my life, and one of the things I'm thankful for is this city council. My scripture in the Bible tells me that each one of you is here for a reason, and you were appointed by God to be here. God's hand had something to do with why you're here, and I'm thankful for that. And I'm also thankful to hear something you guys say every meeting, at the beginning of the meeting, when you say to pledge allegiance, you acknowledge that this is one nation under God, because God is in control of this nation. Many of us, many people don't think he is, but God is in control. So, I would like to invite you as a council to come together to church with me on Sunday, because as leaders of this community, people look at you, and if they look at you and say, "It's okay to go to church, there's something maybe we can learn from going to church," and I just ask that you would accept the responsibility of leading this community, because if Casper could be known as one thing, wouldn't it be great to be known as a church or as a community that does believe we are one nation under God? And so, my church is at 10:30 on Sunday morning at Sunrise Baptist at McKinley and Outer Drive, and I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council? Please come forward. Anyone else? Okay. At this time, we ask council members to bring forward relevant concerns. We will begin with Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Zimmermanly?
Yes, sir.
I have never missed church in 25 years. Unless I was out of town. It's an important part of my life. In no particular order, we are, in reference to Mr. Sweeney's remark about us squawking about liquor licenses, we are going to have a serious discussion about liquor license laws and the impact on the community, and I am interested in learning through this process and have no preconceived opinions, but clearly there is some evidence of potential negative impact to making dramatic changes, and we should look into that. I would like to explain to people that, and I know the people that live in the McKinley and 21st Street area have been frustrated with the apparent delays in the completion of that project by head-quiz construction, but that project has been given an extension because there are some serious problems with the water pipes underneath those streets that were not known until they were dug up, and that we are confident that this project is moving forward as quickly as possible, and that this extension was necessary, given the fact that you can't lay concrete down in the winter. So, this was definitely warranted and not in any way due to a lack of due diligence. I would like to address a couple of Mr. Goodenough's concerns, and regarding the municipal court matter, we did have an extensive discussion about those remarks, and we did have discussion of the operations of the court. We also did discuss the point of the sole-source purchase involving Wyoming Machinery in some detail, and it had to do with the fact that our existing equipment matched the equipment that we were being sold by Wyoming Machinery, and we would have been a major change for our repair crews had we all of a sudden gone to another line of equipment. And we had that discussion in some detail as well. And then we also had a very lengthy discussion about the use of this county council chambers as a public forum, and there are differences of opinion about these things, but our attorneys presented very powerful evidence that this was not in the best interest of the community for us to open this forum up for public, to change these council chambers into a true public forum. And there are many, many potential problems that I'm not going to get into now, but let's just say the council was persuaded that this was not a wise thing to do. I think regarding the issue of sexual assault, I appreciate the challenge that we were given two weeks ago to rise to a higher standard and to, I think your term was to try to achieve excellence in this area, and I think that was an appropriate challenge to give to this council and to the city. We should be pursuing excellence in this area and pursue state-of-the-art methodologies. I think it would be good for those present and watching to know that our chief and our victims coordinator were successful in having Casper be one of three communities in the country to have a grant to create an enhanced law enforcement response to victims program. And this effort predates this entire discussion and was underway because of, because the concerns about the impact of sexual crimes and crime in general on victims has been a concern for an extended period of time, and it's always unfortunate when you hear negative feedback, but evaluation components are included in this program, and I look forward to us getting better in this area. And I think that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, sir. Next week, I've got a meeting, we've got a meeting with the Emical Reus Joint Powers Board. We're continuing to try and manage the property, and we have recently sold one piece of property. We're making some improvements in some of the parking lots out there. You'll see some new boulders that we're going to place out there so people can kind of park where they need to park, and then we'll be putting some signs up. As with Councilman Powell, I'm looking forward to the conversations we have on potential modifications or better understanding, if you will, of Wyoming liquor laws and what we may or may not be able to do to improve the situation to keep businesses going. I do know that the city of Cheyenne also, they have, I think there are six non-operational licenses. They have one more license than we do, as I recall. We have 36, and they have 37 full liquor licenses, full retail liquor licenses available, and they have six of theirs parked. So, those are issues we need to address, as well as addressing issues with overall competition. Obviously, we can reach a point where we have saturation when it comes to too much liquor in one spot, but I think that becomes a bar owner control problem, and we've seen that problem before, and we laid down the law and got it fixed. So, I think we have some options there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few quick items tonight, and mainly in response to you all that are here today. I want to say, regardless of what we have for time limits here, all of us have our contact information on the website, not to say, for all of you guys, I'd be more than happy to field some of those calls outside of these meetings, and I think that's why that information is out there, because we are kind of the voice of everyone in the community. And Shay, you had mentioned the community action teams. I'd like to see more about how that works out, so I'd invite you to contact me and kind of see what we could do in there and try to make us be proactive about these things. Chief Wetzel did give us a great overview on how that process works and what they've been doing in the past, to what Councilman Powell had responded to about the awards and the grants that they've received. This is something that's important to the city, and it's important to me, too, and I know it's important to you, and let's try to talk about that and explore some of these other ideas that we have out there. You had just mentioned that, that's the one thing I had written down here, and I think if there's avenues like that to get public input through a community action team like that, I think that's great because it helps us, it helps the public inform us of what's actually going on out there. And I think we are an important link between the citizens and the city. And the other thing, back up both what Councilman Powell and Hopkins had said about the liquor license laws, I think we all, I speak with everyone here saying, you know, I'm kind of an impartial voice right now, just want to see what's going on. And one thing I have noticed is I do see the impact of what these liquor licenses do for businesses, and yeah, we have a lot of these restaurant ones, but we look at the folks that want to do more than that. So, again, just interested to see where that's going to go. I know WAM's taking some issues on that, and we'll see what the legislature does in Cheyenne this year, so there's still more to come on that, and I look forward to hearing that information. Schedule-wise, a CADA meeting next Thursday, and other than that, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Humphrey.
Thank you, Your Honor. Last week, I attended training to be a certified dementia practitioner, so with our Boomer Study changes and updates that we have going on, I'm hoping that that's somewhat usable. I also got a certification to do train-the-trainer type stuff for dementia, so that's kind of our big project that we're working on right now. The training did make me miss our last senior study meeting, but I did get an update, so that's kind of what I'm working on right now.
Thank you. Councilman Pacheco.
Nothing urgent or pressing in the sense of things going on. I do want to just, one of the things that when people feel like their voices aren't being heard, we do, I know I do, you get countless emails and phone calls from people wanting you to help them, and I think that's one of the great joys of being a city councilman, that I actually feel like I'm doing something sometimes when I get a phone call from somebody in the community or an email that says, you know, "Can you help me with this?" And I find that to be the most, the best part of the job, frankly. A couple of things I just want to touch base on, I wanted to make reference to the third graders that came and did that, and it's kind of mentioning to Wayne about, that was the more enjoyable part as well because of the simplicity that brings with their understanding of government and their understanding of what politics means, because I think we've all become exhausted, if anybody's ever flipped through Facebook recently with the way things have gone, and the pureness of what government can do. There's no government that's perfect. There's no entity that's perfect. There's not one individual that is perfect and can change anything. And what I understand is, is that it takes a community to make a difference and make a change. And that's what I really have come to that foundation and understanding, even with this mess that's happened nationally with this presidential election, right here, us, you and I, we're the ones that make that difference. I am not the smartest person on this council. I will be the first to admit it. But the point that I make is, is that we have to work together in order to do that. And I'll tell you, that's the next two years of my tenure on this council is going to be to represent people better, and I think that's what we really have to learn, those young people that aren't cynical, that understand that, that's what we need to fight for, those young people.
Councilman Healy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In tonight's business, we actually, I guess liquor licenses is a, you know, pretty prevalent theme. I wanted to just take a minute to celebrate and kind of take note that Famous Dave's is becoming Wyoming Ale Works. I had a chance to speak with the owners and hear of their plans, and again, I think it's the choices that we have in Casper for restaurants and other entertainment establishments that make this a nice town and a great town to live in, and it's one of the reasons why I very much enjoy living in Casper, so I want to wish success to the owners of the Wyoming Ale Works as they prepare to open up. I also want to note and congratulate the new owners of Shogun Restaurant and the young folks who opened up the Himalayan Indian Cuisine. All of these establishments are being supported by our actions tonight, and I wish them all very good success in their endeavors.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Kathy.
Well, I attended no meetings this last week. I think some very good comments came about the presentation that Chief Wetzel made at the work session last week. Very good information there. We look forward to see how the grant comes out with the enhanced victims' response, so we're making progress along those lines. Along the lines of liquor, I think it's very interesting that we talk about, we have limited the number of liquor licenses, but yet we have unlimited restaurant licenses. All of us on council just received an email that was from a landowner, rental property owner, that wishes that we would have limited the construction of apartments and condos recently, because now there's an oversupply of them. By the same token, should we have limited the number of drilling rigs that we're running in the state? Should we limit everything? Should we limit everything? And that is not necessarily the purpose of government. Government needs to be, we talk about diversifying our economy, but if we start limiting all of the ideas that come about, then that's stifling diversification and growth. And I think those are all things that we need to be looking for. And so I would caution people about wanting to limit all of the time. That's kind of in a response to the email that we received today about the housing issue. That's all I had there, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. First off, it was I who understood the urgency and the frustration involved in sexual assault. I heard that the chief had more of a presentation that he could have given us, and that I poked it into the agenda so that we would discuss it at our work session last week. It was very informative, a little discouraging, because there are constraints. I directly asked the chief, I said, if this council slapped a table right now and said, hire more people, could you do it? The answer is no. There is a civil service process that he needs to go through. I even suggested poach somebody from some other law enforcement agency. Just how could that work? And those same civil service constraints keeps him from poaching somebody from some other community. So it's, I understand, and I also read the column, the guest column in the Casper Star Tribune this weekend on Sunday, and the writer also mentioned that discrepancy with the six-month sentence for domestic battery. And the writer even made a really important point, and that is that most programs take longer than that. If you're actually going to get somebody in a meaningful program to help address the issue and not just, you know, give up on them and bar the door for the rest of their lives, they need longer than six months to actually complete that training and change their lives. So there's a lot that still can be done and will be done, and maybe this council will actually look into changing that ordinance. Because the way we've addressed that, we said that we can go through the city manager and discuss personnel issues at the police department, maybe there's something else we can do, too. We haven't forgotten, and we do care. Second, Mr. Goodenough thinks that I threatened to withdraw public comments. My statement was not a threat. It was trying to give people some perspective. We were going from no time limit to a time limit, and I just wanted to give people some perspective on that. Third, I failed as your mayor today. I did not read a proclamation that I was supposed to for KW DECA, and it's a matter of me not putting it into my public planner and not having a charged phone when they're calling me going, where are you? So I apologize to KW DECA. If they want me to come down and read that proclamation, I will, hopefully better than my mispronunciations. And sorry about that. The other thing is, I don't know if anybody noticed this, but the little deal with the Casper Events Center and being able to buy/purchase, that means that at the Casper Events Center, if you have your card, you can actually make a purchase with a swipe instead of having to go to the ATM. It's not much progress, but it's a little, and we've just got to hang in there. The next meeting of the Casper City Council will be a work session to be held at 4:30 PM Tuesday, November 8th, in the council meeting room, and a regular council meeting to be held at 6:00 PM Tuesday, November 15th, in the council chambers. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. Moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Please cast your votes. And please record the votes.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
This meeting is adjourned.